Yeah, yeah.
I don't remember seeing it. It's like advanced in age, sometimes those things when I've gotten shit into something somewhere else into a file and I just never catch it. Right.
I need you tomorrow.
No.
Okay.
I was.
You know, I can get that for me.
You gotta show.
It is, but it's I said he gets somewhere, gets it. Shady wife. Necessarily robust. So. Four oh six. Fourth Avenue map. Nope, not work. Yeah. Right.
Donated twice. Got a friend over the. And.
Yes, they have to count them. Yeah, what's names?
My hair.
Not too much, yes.
Me neither.
Let us know, let us know, let us know.
Same shit, we don't need any more snow, we've had enough for a little while.
Probably is.
What are you gonna do with the snow there?
Was gonna hang on for.
Couple of.
Alright, too. Oh, man.
A little break.
Yeah. I'm sure Alaska plays.
Yeah. What?
Thanks for giving.
Very welcome. Nope. I mean, no way. Twenty dollars.
Okay.
That's no more meter.
I'd like. And, and.
What?
I mean, I've been driving. The city.
I don't. It needs.
That's interesting.
Well, you do a lot of things. Just single. You have a lot of big.
I might have no idea.
I didn't tell you who we don't do.
Yeah.
And see. What's up? Family Dollar. Those are ones I don't believe in.
U S D N O. Who's it is?
I said the ones I don't do.
You don't remember. I didn't. I know.
It's not the old same.
All the trees are broken.
That's why I do. If you know. Do not make decisions. Right, right.
Egypt. I'm good.
I didn't realize those lines I was gonna be sent here. Holy cow.
Yep. I guess. She would've been back.
Oh, can.
Something more good.
Some woman like. Cause I had one email name. You know, I didn't have it on my phone. And I didn't recognize the email name at all.
So they used to know those addresses.
They're on the website, they were on yesterday.
The applicant.
Oh, the applicants. I'm thinking.
We'll have to make it to some on that the next week.
Yep. And then the one guy asked me, did I get to come back in and get a chance to raise their bid? I don't know the answer. I told him, I, yeah, I told him from what I knew.
To do here. Vain broom.
Yeah, but I don't like that because.
And neither did.
I think you gotta, you gotta factor in who's the best steward of the ground too, not just who the highest.
No, he just don't want to trip up.
No, it's all, it's all real.
Yeah. I think it, I think this.
I was shocked you could do it either.
Yeah, cause I think there's gotta be discrepancy on who we pick, and we gotta pick best steward plus, you know, cash rent. Whoever's gonna pay the most money for it.
Yeah, I can tell you there, but it's gonna go the other way.
Yeah. You're gonna have to take the ice, Ben? No.
Alrighty, big guy.
Well, it's.
Sorry. Bringing, bringing the meeting to order. Need to prove the agenda.
I'll say.
Even saying proof again, all in favor? Okay, soon as opportunity.
I'm gonna go first. Okay. Um. In last newspaper. The bills that were paid are identical for both. November meetings, the bills that were paid are identical here and here. Identical bills. I don't want the bills to get paid twice. The same bills to be paid twice, but I wanna make sure the bills that needed to be paid got paid. And. I believe, and I don't quote me, I'm not gonna say that I know what I'm talking about at this point, but there have been, without having the proof in my hands. There have been other times where there's been one or two things that look like they've been paid twice. I'm an auditor. I look at these things and they means they jump out at me. When I, I asked for the years. Worth of minutes. The bills were not included with that.
Yeah.
And. I, I'd like to see those included with it. That the bills, that whatever records you keep here, those bills need to be kept with those records.
Okay, and they are.
I, I'm just saying that that's extremely important because any citizen can come in off the street and say, I wanna look at that. And we have to be able to say, here it is. But I would like to have this checked into.
Okay.
As to, and let me know. What? What bills were paid and just reassure me that they were not paid twice.
Sure.
Is all I'm hoping.
Yeah, I can do.
But I would also like to see. I'm gonna call it proof, but I'd like to see some kind of backup paperwork. For it in that, like I say, I, that's my job.
Any of that be caught by, like Nick Lemers and stuff like that if something was paid? If, if the same bills were paid twice, would it get triggered or not?
Well, he's also a year behind right now.
Depends if he looks.
I understand.
I mean, he has to notice those things. This is within a month, this was within thirty days.
I'm betting I ran the same report twice on.
And, and I bet you did too, and I'm praying and hoping that's what happened.
I'm just simply asking if that's the system of checks for it, that something that Nick would catch as well. Not saying discrediting what you're saying or saying they're, we are all aware of us being behind on. Some of the reports and some of the bookkeeping that needs to be done, we've talked about that at length. Doesn't need to be, you know, but I'm just simply asking if that's something that Nick would catch is what my question was.
My question then is how fast will Nick be able to catch it? Because these checks get out there for very long, there's no way you're gonna get it back if it was paid twice.
Understandable. It's not.
I mean, I don't wanna play, I don't wanna have an argument, I'm just saying. These things need to be kept track of. Indeed. That's what I do for my job, so. If you would let me know, I would greatly.
Do that shit. I can like.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, I also was asked to speak by a current board member from the park board. Um, they were hoping to make it to speak themselves, but they're coming to work a little later than expected, so they wanted me to just kinda make a comment. There's been talk of the shelter house and other things that are happening down at the park. Um, I'd like you to remember that you do have an ordinance for park mission. They do, as stated in twenty four point oh six, have exclusive control of the parks. They also have exclusive control of the pool. Um, so when lifeguard wages were raised and anything that's done with maintenance or. Parts or the heater for the pool, that should all be run through them. Also, any decisions for the shelter house should also be run through them. I know that the board got together last, and they currently run under the assumption that the shelter house was potentially gonna be. A silo or rain ban or of some sort, they had no idea about anything related to the school until it ran into the paper. Or listening on the video live stream. So some of the board members are questioning what their role is specifically on the board, if they were being consulted. For parts and pool and their whole purpose. So before any decision is made tonight, I want you to remember that. We have ordinances that we need to abide by before we go ahead and take that before you upon ourselves.
Who is on that board?
Kelly Bonamy, Craig from the bank, and. Jeff Shear.
And Brandy Henry.
No. She's not on the board.
If she is.
It's not listed anywhere that I know of.
Who was it again?
Kelly Bonamy, Craig Phillips, and Jeff Shear.
So then what's the, the sequence of events that needs to take place, we put it in the agenda. Nobody from the board comes to the meeting to discuss it, are we supposed to take it to their board first before you can discuss it, or how is that supposed to? What's the sequence of that needs to occur there? We're not trying to, we're not trying to.
No.
Undermine anybody's stuff, we're just trying to move things forward, but. Like, I didn't know who was on the board here, that's probably on me.
Mark living part four. Has a board.
Yes.
Recently in the.
Yes, I've met with everybody, I met with parts and board.
The board stated only two were able to attend because the agenda did not get to them.
Well, there were three, and I've talked to everybody.
I really get the information that was related to me by those board members.
So who was in charge of the insurance when that came up? Park board, was they supposed to talk to the insurance? After it burned down, or is that back onto the city?
That's a great question for you guys to know, I'm not in your position yet, so. Again, that board member was hoping to see her, but gonna make your, do your timing straight, and I really give him the message I was giving.
I'm just saying, my problem with some of the stuff is the way it comes off is it seems like people are thinking that we're trying to do something. Underminingly, and we're, we're trying to do the best job we can.
Absolutely.
The way it's presented, the way that it's communicated with us at times is a little bit.
It's a tough.
It's, it's a little abrasive, I would say that, and I hope that people realize we're doing the best job we can, we're trying to move stuff forward. There's a, just if there's a lack of communication on, on somebody's end, it's not malicious, it just, there needs to be a path for on how we make sure that stuff doesn't happen again.
Absolutely, and I think it's.
I agree.
A liability situation to abide by your ordinances and what they are stating.
I agree, I think.
Any other? Comment? Okay, proceeding forward. Consent agenda, approve the previous minutes, and approve the bills.
Motion to approve the previous minutes and approve the bills.
I second.
Motion second to approve the previous minutes and the bills, all in favor? Discuss. And approve action on the crisis canine.
Uh, just real quick on that, Lorenz agreed to pay half, so it would be four hundred and five plus the one twenty five setup fee splitting too. But Lorenz is a go for it, so I guess I'm just looking for approval. For making Rusty official.
So they'll say that again about they're paying what?
They're willing to pay half the insurance cost.
Yeah.
And it's a one twenty five setup fee, and then it was eight hundred and ten dollars a year. So they're willing to pay half. And that insurance covers any, it's, it's a general life. Just in case, you know, we have.
Yeah, exactly, and you know, and obviously it's trained and whatever, it's just, that's the reason why I looked into it, just to make sure, because if we do make him official official, I mean. I did have him out, they had a relatively disturbing incident at Lorenz School here last. For the last meeting, so they asked Rusty to come up, so we did, I still brought Rusty up, and obviously he performed fine and everything else, but. It's just nice to have that little extra cushion and prepare, at least I'm not worried about Rusty doing something, but why not? Make sure.
Well, I'll make the motion to. Well, when we say, I guess, when we say that approve the actions, approve the insurance and approve our splitting, right?
Right, yep.
I'll make the motion to approve us splitting. Crisis canine with Lorenz.
I'll second.
Hey. To approve the action on the crisis canine. Stipulation. All in favor? Cool. Okay. Action on.
Alex.
Alex. Vacation.
So once again, I'm here, fifth year in a row, coming up on the fifth year in a row. Obviously, because of the shortages we've had, or deployments, or whatever. You know, the problem becomes, which is not a problem necessarily for the city, because I, I typically get paid for one extra shift out of every five to six. Days covered, right, extra? So the city is, has not had to pay typically almost for any of these time gone, but the other problem with that is my time off. You know, there just isn't a lot of time to take time off, and for whatever reason, it always ends up, okay, now I'm in. November, I wanna make sure I'm not gonna take time off while Dalton's still fresh. Now I'm at December first, and basically I've already burned. Fifty plus hours, but only because I'm working, I'm just out working, but it just puts a second officer out so I can get some more administrative tasks done for. And actually catch up on some of the investigations that have come in for. Pocahontas has been burying the investigation. So. Um, so. You know, so, so that's the problem, and you know, last year I came and we had the same thing, and we don't wanna make this an every year thing. But I also, I also wanted to start the discussion and potentially with the new folks, because again, it makes it very hard when you have to be zeroed out on the calendar year every year. I mean, just for all employees, right? I'm not saying we go over, but. To get to zero can be extremely difficult, especially, you know, I'm, we're required by law to have somebody fill in. So I don't put the weight on the other officers, I'm the one eating eighty-five percent of the extra shifts. They can take any extra shift they want, I don't force them to though, I just go. So. But like I said, it's made, and that's one reason why I haven't had the surgery. That's where I'm at, so I don't know what to do about the vacation, I'm not here to. Take, borrow, and steal, I'm just here. Was there an exception, I get, my first two years I was here, Joan just extended it. Whatever I had left over, and that's how it was handled, and then when we lost Joan, then the transitions happened, and then we formalized the process with the city council.
Is it vacation on the fiscal year, not the calendar?
Well, it is on the calendar year.
It's calendar.
It's calendar year.
Yeah.
Not higher date.
No.
See, and I always thought I should, I mean, I know, I always got it, I got into this, been fond of it too, we got into this whole whether it's anniversary or. But we've been doing anniversary, or calendar dates. For January first to June.
I mean, but I mean, at the fiscal year, we discussed yours.
Yes, because I was looking at the budget going forward, if you were gonna pay me out, or if you were gonna extend it in those six months. Cause I knew I had six months to use it. And so then I tried to take that next week, right away.
And again, I'm not asking for payout, I'm not out, I'm just. Hold over, do whatever, I don't know, Kyle, do you know what I'm down to? I came in here and I forgot my number, I know I've taken. Took twenty-four. Forty-eight, I should be below a hundred, but just.
And just because I'm the next item, I'm above a hundred hours. Left.
And if you tell me that I can only carry forty or eighty, whatever, what is, what is the policy saying?
Use or lose.
Yeah. And that's just where it gets, and again, that comes on that benefit side, right, too, like the hospital carried over.
That's, it's just, you don't wanna set a precedent, we've done it before, I understand that this year there were some challenges, you know, with, with Lorenz, but. You know, I, she, that's part of it is. You know, making that stuff work, and it's, you know.
Well, this wasn't even Lorenz, this was just us, you know, I mean, this was, this had nothing to do with Lorenz.
So at least, basically, we're. Well, we're not, I've heard, yeah, but we're asking for the same thing. We did that twice already. I'm once each. It's hard to tell Chad when he walks in, no, you can't.
He's off the rest of the month of December.
I know, I'm just using as a general example, that's what I'm saying, that is like a, a thing, it's just, it's hard when somebody else.
Someone walks in.
Yeah, ask for it, because they had, you know, so and so couldn't because of this, that, there's always a reason. It's just, it needs to be planned a little bit better. You know. The whole year round to make sure that, and I understand things come up with.
And there was no way to take off.
Yeah.
I mean, again, other than them putting stress on the other guys, and part of our employee retention comes to that.
This is one of those unfortunate situations, no matter what you do or say, there's gonna be pissed off people on one end of it, so we're in a tough spot.
Use it or lose it, there's no, in the policy, the, no buyout, or you can't sell any back.
No, it's part of the task.
You were allowed to carry over eighty hours of comp time. So this time of year with snow removal and stuff like that.
You can get.
Into a. I do get comp time, but I don't bank any comp time, cause. I can't use my vacation to put things in comp, I mean, that's what some of the guys do, is they, they bank their comp over, and then they burn their vacation down. I mean, you see how the game is played there, well, it doesn't, that doesn't really work.
So is there a limit on how much comp time to get?
Hundred and sixty.
No, see, that's what's changed, it's a hundred and sixty, yeah, now, so how much?
I don't get comp, just my two cents.
So what, what action are we looking at here? What are we?
I mean, I'm willing to do whatever, I mean, as far as, I mean, like I said, and that's why I'm not here to, if it's, if it's a no, I, again, I'm gonna continue to do what I do. What I do. You know, so, you know.
It's a tough deal, cause we appreciate everything you do, though you go above and beyond for the, the city public house for the hours you work, and so. My, my personal opinion, I'd like to do something, I just, and we're on, you know, the fourth, fifth year, and. I guess I would feel more comfortable having discussion with all five of us. What, you said the hospital, what you carry?
Yeah, you can carry over forty hours, and you could sell forty hours.
What does the county do?
The county, for instance, I'm on a thirty-five hour week, I can bank. Hundred and forty on my anniversary. But on my comp time, anything I have over forty at the end of the year, I have to be paid out for. There's a difference in that you earn comp time. You have to be paid out, your comp time has to be paid out, you earn vacation. That's your responsibility to take time off. That you've been allowed. But comp time has to.
So if we're gonna do something, we really need to get it all squared away.
And that's, and like.
And that's fine, we can upgrade, we can upgrade the handle going forward.
That's what I mean, we need up.
Yes. There's the policy.
Well, and then.
The policy.
Yeah, no.
Cause I think that.
Maybe need to look into what some other cities do.
See, there's only.
Some.
And that's why, again, our, our biggest, and I'm again, not blaming the sheriff, but that's always been our biggest competitor, right, you know, so, but that is considered a benefit on the county side, and that's not just in the sheriff's office, it's with all your road crews and everything else. I mean, that's a huge benefit.
But I just mean if we're gonna do it.
Right.
For you too.
Well, and I agree.
Whatever we do, it needs to be for everyone.
And we will, and we will.
And that was my argument years ago, was the, the, the policy in and of itself, to me, is a benefit, that we need to look at modifying, and only because, except hospital, county, I mean. I just think, uh, you need to. Me and Jonathan probably won't be on that then, but we need to really look in. How much comp time you can bank? To see, I, I don't know if this is true, I just heard the number's huge. That you can carry how many hours you should go.
Hundred and sixty.
That's it? In comp time?
Yeah.
And you can carry that forever?
Each year you can carry a hundred and sixty, you cannot carry more.
And no one does?
No, they get paid out if it's over a hundred and sixty.
Is that on the high end compared to other features?
Most of the guys, most of the guys.
As far as other cities, do they?
It's high.
It's high, that's right.
Yep.
When I first started, it was, what, it was ninety, the sign, it was eighty.
Most of the other cities are.
Carried eighty is because.
Are around.
You got a rig, you kept a hundred, you kept building it year, build from year to year to year, you kept carrying that money. From now, you might, five years from now, you might be getting another six, seven dollars an hour. For your time that you earned ten years ago.
And, oh, yeah.
So it's, it was eighty hours, and you carried that, or no more than eighty hours. You used your vacation, if you didn't use it, you lose it, and if they said if you couldn't use your vacation in a year, it was because they were giving you too much.
So I think.
No, I mean. Same place, other people I know that work at the city, same place Alex was, hey, I'm gonna take next week off, well, we got something going on next week, do you really have to take time off? No, I, I guess I can stay, so you gave up your time off to stay at the city, then at the end of the year, you might have six or seven days, you didn't use it, you lose it. So somewhere. No, you can change your reg, your regiment.
Somewhere in the, in the. Time, it must've went from eighty to a hundred and sixty.
When I got here, it was a hundred and twenty, and then it's gone up to a hundred and sixty. So they added another week. Calm. Yeah.
Vacation's based.
Vacation's based on tenure.
I think.
Can you look into see what some other towns do, variable cycle.
I know what some do, but yeah, I can look into all of them.
Kinda get us up.
Yeah.
Yeah, Alex does get put in a tough spot a lot of times, and that's where it's. I wanna do something about it, but I, yeah, we feel a little bit more comfortable with everybody else here.
Okay, we can table.
This is something honestly, a little bit more, not in my wheelhouse, since it's not something I deal with on a day to day.
That works. Everybody okay if we table that? Table both of them, yeah. I'll get you some numbers and I'll get you some benefits of others.
Okay, so those two are.
Table till the fifteenth.
Okay. Moving along, are we ready then, first reading of the ordinance, chapter eighty-one railroad regulation.
So again, as I just, so what I've been using my vacation time for by putting that other officer out there, but I'm still actually in the office working or doing whatever, whatnot. I've been finally been able to start kicking, so obviously chapter eighty-one was an easy one, we don't have railroad, there's no reason to have a road regulation for where we want to clean them. So let's figure, cause I'm, I'm gonna try to pick an easy one, one, and then maybe a little more difficult ones if it goes, so. But that was. But I know everybody wants to get on the nuisance and stuff, so I wanted to, like, those two are the two big ones, but I had a question came up. So anyway, so railroad regulations is pretty easy, just needs to be read, three readings or however you wanna do, at least do. Again, my recommendation is always, unless you get a lot of, you know, read it the first time, have it for your second meeting, if it's the second meeting and there's really nothing, unless there is, I mean, obviously you have to have an emergency reading to, or emergency reason to waive those readings, but.
Yeah, because this one just really doesn't.
Don't apply to this anymore, and I don't see that the Amtrak's gonna move anybody's.
Yeah.
So how do we consider those first reading then? Just re-look? Yep.
And then I have to vote, I mean, motion up. Read.
Do I need to read it?
Some do, some don't, but again, usually the, the thing is to read.
Can I read it? Okay, section one repeal, chapter eighty-one railroad regulations in the city total of city of Pocahontas. Section two repealer, all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section three severability clause, if any section provision or part of this ordinance shall be. Adjud. Thank you. Invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section, provision, or part thereof, not. Provision or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section four, when affected, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage approval and publication by law.
That considered reading one? Any action we have to take, is there, at this point?
Most of the approved reading one, I make the most of the one of. Chapter eighty-one.
A second.
Move to second to approve chapter eighty-one.
Approve, repeal chapter eighty-one.
Peel chapter eighty-one, yeah. All favor? Okay, first reading, so.
Next, do I have to do a roll call on that?
Yes, actually.
Yeah.
Oh, do. Oh, yeah, we gotta get everybody in order. So Jonathan.
Hi.
Cody.
Hi.
Andy. Uh, moving on, first reading to amend the ordinance, chapter fifty-one, junk reading.
So there's always been this problematic way of enforcement of these junk vehicles go. Obviously, if anybody's ever had to do the abatement procedure like I have, um, there's positives and negatives to that, but a lot of times, a lot of your. Expense then end up going into attorneys, nothing wrong with attorneys, but it tends to go that way. Um, the other problem was, is that, you know, folks have had issues with campers in yards, for instance, and some of those things, well. The way our code reads, it really does a very poor job of dealing with that. So you'll see this, and we're basically replacing chapter fifty-one with a little more modernized ordinance, one that is a little more descriptive. Um, as you read through that, you can see that the, the biggest changes it adds, the definition of what a camper is. So a camper, as later we'll talk about unlicensed vehicles, there's actually an unlicensed vehicle section to this, about unlicensed vehicles. Being in people's yards. Um, and so, and it enhances the description of what a junk vehicle is, for instance, the old code. Which most have now been changed, it said, one, or it said, two tires had to be missing and something else. This one tire missing and something else, so, but again, most of my vehicles that I have that are junk around town. Whether they're missing two or one, they have to move. Sign it, I mean, long before I got here, so, um, that's just the reality of it, so that's what you're gonna see in this ordinance. Is just an enhancement to that, uh, I also added in there. You have what's called, and I've gone through this before, you have what's called a municipal infraction, and you have what's called, uh, criminal action. Our ordinance can do one of either, when we go through abatement procedures, you're talking about municipal infractions, the city has to pay a court cost with that. Um, it goes through a process, just like with the magistrate and whatnot. Some of these, but the problem was, is that it's not totally clear whether I could take a junk vehicle, so. Or junk, so I've got somebody with junk in their yard, if I have to abate every single nuisance. It becomes very wieldy, right? I mean, it becomes pretty significant. So if we're talking about someone that has a couch and a whole bunch of trash in their yard. I have to go through a whole abatement procedure, when literally I should just be able to write them a ticket, send them to the judge. Then also with a request for an order to have that removed, but treat it as a simple misdemeanor. So that's, that adds that to this code as well, that I can just basically write you a criminal ticket, saying, hey, get the crap out of your yard. You're gonna go face the judge. So the, the minimum fine in Pocahontas is sixty, I think.
So it's not just an automatic, you know?
No, they have to, so they will actually have a port of current required, they'll go in front of the judge. The judge will have the basic information about what the nature of the nuisance is, and then. If the person pleads not guilty, then they get to have a court hearing and they can argue that, or if they just wanna pay their ticket. Um, gives me a little more teeth, cause I'm just gonna, I'm, I'm, abating can take some time, so. Certified notices, all this other stuff, where, simple nuisance, and we always go up to someone. When I cite, when I, when I ask an officer, I say, or, or if I go grab a, a, a car now, and I say, okay, hey, guys, I'm getting complaints on this. Something needs to happen with this, I'm gonna give you thirty days, you know, that's all in that notice as well, but it's, I write it in the ticket instead. Personal documenting all, so. Um. Those are the biggest changes to that, um, it does, like I said, also provide for, you'll see, that it. Severes the zoning issues that we have with certain vehicles being in areas that. So for zone, medium, this is my work that I had done with the city attorney, uh, well, and Laura was just getting here last year. When we got, Eric IED got hired, our city attorney, and I worked with him on that. Part of the problem is, is what's allowed in our zoning or not, and again, zoning needs to be updated as well. Um, my junk and junk vehicle ordinance is depending on where you're at. I mean, this does allow you to have an unlicensed vehicle, um, at a property. Uh, and out there in the industrial or wherever, but they're specific, it has to be on a hard surface, it has to have a hard surface completely underneath it. You know, it has to be on a driveway, um, so you get one. You know, more than one, cannot be in the grass, cannot have an unlicensed vehicle in the grass.
Even at the, even out at like the industrial park.
Yeah, even out at the industrial park, only one one, now, the, the key behind the unlicensed is, if you have your dealer license, you can argue that they're all licensed.
Okay.
So it does, we still have maybe some concerns there, but for the most part, I have, like out on the industrial, I have. One business for sure, has got vehicles out there, they're parking in the grass, whatnot, broken windows broken out. But they're not licensed either, so, and we can start working.
So can they be, are they designated as junk vehicles then?
Well, they're, they're dedicated, there's called, well, it can be a junk vehicle, but they're automatically an unlicensed vehicle, so if they're a junk vehicle, if they're not registered, and then. Two flat tires, missing a hood, missing a bumper. Any of those other things apply to them, they go into the junk.
So then if you have a dealer license, is that, if you have a junk dealer, the, do you get what I'm saying?
That's the part of the problem, and.
So is there a way to black and white this up a little bit, and that, or no?
No, and talking with the city attorney on it, um, there's ways, but it takes. And part of that comes with the city that needs to work on it, once we get this done, then we start tackling the zoning. Uh, and a big thing when Justin Yarkovich from the.
Yeah.
From, uh, submarine. He does codes, I've known Justin for years, he, uh. That's what I was like, he had recommended that we merge the zoning into the city code, which is like what Humpson has, it's in the Marlin region.
So is there anything in here that states, cause there's decent amount of people that have campers, they keep them up nice, they park them on a hard surface. And store them for the winter, there's nothing in here that will cause a, a loss of any of that.
No, that's all, this is for folks that are putting in the grass, they must make sure that they, again, because we really have nothing to hold them, so if they have a flat tire on it.
Yeah.
And I've run into this in a couple places where I have campers with flat tires, and one has not been registered since nineteen ninety-eight. Our ordinances does not allow me to do anything with it, because it's not classified as a vehicle.
But this will.
This includes.
This will share that up and make it so you can't do something like that. Is there anything else in here? You know, is that, skimming through it, not familiar with it like you are, that is any cause for concern that there would be?
No, this is modeled after the City of Mary, is the one I used, because they have a huge. I know when they went through their reformation of all their cleaning up the City of Mary, so. Um, it's a very strong one, it's a very popular one, especially on the eastern side of the state. Um, you know, there's different theories about how to do given, this is one of the better one, and I merged a little bit of our code into the two. Just adding a few more descriptions, just thinking.
Speaking of concerns, you're supposed to have a public hearing before you vote on these ordinances.
No.
With public notice given, so that people can voice their concerns over ordinance changes prior to voting for them.
Only if they include a, uh, rates, rates require a public hearing.
I, there's also supposed to be a public notice for the sale of the lot coming up, which wasn't.
It's in the paper. It's in there.
Great, what are we at then?
So how, so, explain to me the, so you see a junk vehicle on a, on a property, cause in here it talks about the abatement, you said you wanted to avoid the abatement.
It still allows me to do it.
Okay, still allowing you to do that, but it also allows you to give, like a citation that they would have to be, go to court and deal with.
Abatements are for those bigger issues, where you get into the big, significant, you know, where you're dealing with, that's a part of multiple issue. Um, where we know the person is potentially wanting to clean it up, you know, and not be problematic. Or again, where you issue a citation the first time, and then the second time you say, okay, if you're not gonna do that, we're just gonna, we're just. It's just, like I said, what becomes that, and the fine and the penalty on the abatement is certainly difficult. So, again, this just gives you a little extra tool to convince people to.
So this isn't changing any of the, the fines or abatement stuff or anything like that, it's just.
And again, if you wanna read it, and push it back, I mean, it, it's just, this really your first reading is when you're having that big discussion on it too, so it, it doesn't necessarily have to. You can delay your first reading to the next one, it's just putting it out there.
I think. But sure stuff up, I guess, I think we need to kinda get going, if we just keep delaying some, the next week we have. Our next, I mean, three or four.
They considered this the first reading, yeah, is that what you're saying? Okay, we need roll call. Or we need it.
We need a motion.
Need a motion?
You have to read it out loud, like the last.
Thanks. Ordinance twenty-six dash twenty-two-five, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Pocahontas by amending provisions pertaining to junk. And junk vehicles, be it enacted by the City Council of Pocahontas. Section one, chapter modified, chapter fifty-one of the code and ordinances of the City of Pocahontas, Iowa, is repealed and the following is adopted in lieu of. We're waving the reading of two and three, or this counts as reading one?
I know.
We're gonna count this, okay, so that counts as reading one, I'm not, you don't really wanna listen, right? Go through.
I recommend this. I'll read it if, if it needs to be done, I don't care, if something needs to be done, I'll read it.
Go for it.
Okay. For use in this chapter, the following terms are defined, camper vehicle without motive. Power, use, or sole manufactured or constructed as to permit its use as a conveyance upon a public street or highway. And so designed to allow it to sit in a bed of a pickup truck and designed to provide temporary living quarters for recreational camping or travel use. The term also embraces travel trailers and fifth wheel, travel trailers as defined by the Code of Iowa. Driveway, established hard surface of crushed rock, base portion of a residential lot. Leading from the street to an existing garage or to the side of the house, if there's no garage, and does not include. Any area of a grass yard, junk, all. Old or scrap copper brass lead or any other non-ferris metal, old or discarded rope, rags, batteries, paper trash. Rubber debris, waste, or used lumber, or salvage wood, dismantled vehicles, machinery, and appliances or parts of such vehicles, machinery. Or appliances, iron, steel, or other old or scrap ferris metals. Old or discharged glass, tinware, plastic, or old or discarded, household goods or hardware, neatly stacked firewood located on a side yard. Or rear yard is not considered junk, junk vehicle, any vehicle or motor vehicle, including a camper located within. Corporate limits of the city, whether licensed or unlicensed, which has any of the following characteristics. Has become a ha- habitat of rats, mice, skunks, or any other vermin or insects, lack an engine. Or one or more wheels, or another, or other structural parts which render it inoperable. Is in defective or obsolete condition in any way which could constitute a threat to the public health, safety, or welfare. Any vehicle with broken or cracked windshield, window, headlight, or taillight, or any other cracked or broken glass. Any vehicle with a broken, loose, or missing fender, door, bumper, hood, steering wheel, or trunk lid. Unlicensed, any vehicle or motor vehicle not displaying a valid parent license as required by the laws of the State of Iowa, vehicle. Every device in, upon, or by which a person or property is or may be transported or drawn upon. A highway or street, expect, except, devices moved by human power and includes, without limitation, a motor vehicle, automobile, truck. Motorcycle, tractor, buggy, wagon, camper, farm machinery, or any combination thereof. Junk and junk vehicles prohibited, it is unlawful for any person to store, accumulate, or allow to remain. On any private property within the corporate limits of the city, any junk or junk vehicle. Junk and junk vehicles a nuisance. It is hereby declared that any junk or junk vehicle located upon private property unless expected. Unless expected, accepted by section fifty-one dot oh-four constitutes a threat to the health and safety of the citizens. And is a nuisance within the meaning of section six, five, seven dot one of the Code of Iowa. If any junk or junk vehicle is kept upon private property in violation. Hereof, the owner or person occupying the property upon which it is located shall be. Prima. Facia liable for said violation, thank you. Code of Iowa, section three, six, four, dot one, two, subsection three A. Fifty-one dot oh-four exceptions, the provision of this chapter do not apply to any junk or junk vehicles stored within. One, a structure, a garage, or other enclosed structure, or two, business enterprise, a business enterprise lawfully involved. In their repair maintenance, sales, or salvage of vehicles, provided they comply with the regu- with the requirements. For location screening and storage, as prescribed by the zoning regulations. Three, vehicle repair, a vehicle under active repair parked upon the driveway of a residentially zoned property not having a garage, provided the owner. Has notified the police department in writing of the owner's intent to actively repair the vehicle, and repairs are completed within thirty days of the notification. Fifty-one dot oh-five, notice to abate, upon discovery of any junk or junk vehicle located upon private property in violation of section fifty-one dot oh-three. The city's, the city shall, within five days, initiate abatement procedures as outlined in chapter fifty of this code of ordinances. Fifty-one dot oh-six, unlicensed vehicle parking, no owner of real estate, person in possession of real estate, or owner of a vehicle shall allow. An unlicensed vehicle or, or unlicensed motor vehicle to be parked or stored in front, back, or side yard in any zoning district. All such unlicensed vehicles must be parked upon an established driveway or hard surface crushed rock base parking space on such property. Not more than one such vehicle shall be parked upon any property at one time. Fifty-one dot oh-seven, penalties, a violation of this chapter shall be a simple misdemeanor or a municipal infraction, nothing herein contains. Contained prevents the City of Pocahontas from taking such other lawful action as is necessary to prevent or remedy violation. Section two, severability clause, if any section provision or part of the ordinance shall be adjudged. Invalid or unconstitutional, such. Adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinances. As a whole or any section provision or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section three, when effective, the ordinance, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage approval and publication. As provided by law. So get through that three times at every single.
Okay, I need a motion then, to.
I'll make the most of the improvements.
Reading one.
Second.
Move to second to prove, reading one of.
Ordinance.
I think so, uh, what one is.
Only six, dash twenty-five.
That's roll call, right?
Okay, Jonathan.
Hi.
Cody.
Hi.
Andy.
So, the next one, the, the, and this is where I needed a little guidance, um, and if I was working on this. I was going through my notes with the city attorney on it, and then I realized that I wanted to get a little more guidance, and it actually goes back as much. Teased about the tree section and some of that other stuff going on. He had recommended a certain property maintenance ordinance, and so as we had talked through it, I looked and I thought, well, I can make this work. The only problem with that is, is I started, is I started comparing it to our code, there were bits and pieces. That are in different sections, so the City of Humboldt is the one that he recommends, and the City of Humboldt did amazing things with theirs. Um, where it differs from ours is it enumerates the. Property issues in a much better way, it lists the, what is a nuisance to the house, you know. Is chipping paint on a house, it's kind of in ours, but theirs is a lot more expressive to how it affects. Because that's always the thing, is that when we go to file these, you know, you're looking at, uh, safety, health, and welfare, well. Welfare really gets, you're gonna go under welfare, because that is the value of the houses next to it, the property owners, right, cause it affects the welfare and the public. Um, obviously, there can be other safety concerns, you know, doors to a storm shelter or missing, or any of those kind of things. But it does a better job, now, the only problem with that is, is that, for instance, grass is under property maintenance, it's truly an ordinance that covets. Where our vegetation and our grass is actually in our tree section. So before I came forward with this, I'm like, I probably should put those all together, right, as, as a block. Are you okay, and I can just present it for the next time for everybody to read through that, I mean, again, as long as we're getting through these. Um, I don't know how you wanna do it, but this became my question, how are you guys, and I know we're gonna have a new council coming in and everything else. But I wanna make sure, cause once we do this, let's just get it done right, and, um. My recommendation would obviously, I really like what Humboldt's done, we know it was very successful in what they did to do their cleanups. They had no trouble in court, which is the bigger issue for me, I'm gonna be the one going to court on these. I'm not saying ours would, it just makes, it's. My level of evidence is a little tougher, cause this enumerated.
My take would be, if, if there's another community that's doing it, doing it well, then, I mean.
Yeah.
I think we should pour information from them and.
Obviously.
Bring that forward, we can discuss it, but if we can condense it, make it easier and feel clear, and more black and white, more black and white things can be. And not left up open to interpretation, or the, the better it's gonna be for everybody.
Right, so basically what it will do, it will include, I think it merges three sections, and I can't remember the third one, but trees would then become trees only, and so trees only discussed trees. Would all be pulled under property maintenance, so you just have one. And most likely what we would do, we would just rescind the main ordinance and then recreate.
And a lot of those things too, my take on it, and I don't speak for everybody, but if it makes your life easier, the police's life easier on what they have to do, that's a big part of it too. Cause you guys are the ones that deal with it, they know.
And a big part to the humble one, and the others, my other sales pitch to it is, is that it allows, so like, let's say, we had a building downtown and bricks fell over. This would allow the city to actually include in its cost, if you had to bring in an engineer to prove that that building is not. Where our current ordinance is kinda like, how the heck am I gonna do this, because if we bring those folks in there, it doesn't allow for those costs. You know, it doesn't allow for that, it doesn't even acknowledge those things, where the humble ordinance says that. The, the building official who is the city administrator, and then we become the property maintenance folks on the. Police department side, or whoever you choose to, to, to do those things, um, which we have no problem doing those from the police department. It becomes problematic if all of a sudden they say, you know, you go talk to the owner and say, hey, this doesn't work, you know, this building, these windows are falling in, this and this and this. And they want to become difficult about it, so, and I might have to call somebody in, you know, the city man. Well, we need to make sure our costs are reduced. So that's why I like this new ordinance, like, and I don't know why I didn't catch that when him and I were talking and I was going through it, but then I was like. Probably should have discussion before it trips forward, so I will prepare for the next meeting, that, and what that will look like.
Well, this point didn't for this one.
So, and we will probably just put it up as a discussion point, you know, for sure.
Okay.
And then it gives a new council time to listen to you.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing, we're selling lot four.
So we have to go into a public hearing.
Let's go into a public hearing. So go into, yeah.
Need a motion. I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
One second.
Move, does that go into public hearing concerning lot four, Prairie Estates, phase two? On paper.
So they're starting to sell further down the east side now, so we're three up, there's only one more. And then all that's left is most of the west side, we've sold one on the west side. So we've still got about ten to go, but that'd be it. This was a forty thousand dollar lot, we still have two fifty thousands out there, then it drops to thirty and then to twenty-five. So this, this puts us almost at the halfway.
Three on the west side.
Is there three on the west, well, I guess, yeah, negatives, but I consider them faithful. Local family, just moving away from the busy area where they are, and this will be their final landing spot. Money is waiting to be deposited.
And so we just need approval for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you close the hearing?
We probably better approve it first. We did, so now we have to approve.
Approve the sale then now too?
Sales should come after, public hearings open and close, and then you do the sale.
Oh, my bad.
Your public.
My bad, you were right.
I'll make a motion, close the public hearing.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Move the second to close public hearing, on paper. So now we need. To approve the sale.
I'll make most approve the sale of lot four. On Prairie Estates, phase two. I'll second that.
Motion.
Move in second to approve the sale of lot four, Prairie Estates. Phase two, on paper. So, so move.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so we're clear on this, so have, has this, you sit on the board, the pub, the board for the parks board?
I meet with all of them, but I'm not a voting, I'm not a voting.
So do they know of this here then?
I have talked to Craig, he's the only one I could get over.
Okay, so I don't wanna do anything with this until they're notified.
And that's fine.
Or talked to.
That's fine.
About it, or they can come in on the next meeting, that would be.
Yep.
Right, so if you could reach out to them and see.
I will.
What they would like to do, cause I don't want them to feel like we're.
Yeah, no, I don't want to, I wanna, yeah, I can be in touch, you bet.
Cause if they would take that upon, on and make decisions on it, that's fine by me.
Okay. Just so you know, I'm sorry.
So how do we do that?
Exactly, yeah.
I send them the information.
Who, um. It's the city's money, we just hope to spend the money.
Yeah, we won't just.
We give them a budget.
It actually says in the city code that the park board has to submit a bunch of them, and they have a line item in the city.
And right now, there's no line item in for parks.
But that is what, so definitely.
There's a line item, I take that back, there's no money in it, like it's all zero now, just like the animal.
So they have to request it, or we have to, we have to put the money in there, so the church money we got, that should be on the light item for the parks board, and then they decide what they wanna do with it?
Right, apparently so.
Or can you do some research on that to see how?
Yeah.
That needs to be handled.
So the council still has the final say, right?
Yes, council always has final.
Is this what we were looking at?
Okay.
That's what we were looking at, um. It's a picture I borrowed, and then I.
Well, that's what ten grand gets you there, buddy.
Thirty-nine hundred.
I think we need to at least put it back like it was, I like that north wall block, it makes it a little. I mean. Every time something happens, right, and I said this.
Good place for kids to hide when the cops try.
Yeah, or burn it everywhere.
The diving board, the high diving board, it was too much work, cost too much money, we took it down. Shelter house burns down, we wanna put it, or suggestion is put something up that's just simple. Instead of improving or keeping it the same. It's, in my opinion, it's ridiculous.
Sitting over seeing all of a sudden you get mouthy.
No, I, I.
I agree.
I think the, that's not on the agenda, I think the diving board, the high board should be put back up.
We, there's a whole crew in town pushing.
And do what we need to do to make it safe.
So go on, with the, need to check how that works, so if that's up to the, this board, then.
Evidently, the board was taken down without their approval, is what I'm saying, right?
Yeah.
Well, there is a group in town researching items for the two of us, and that is one of the items. Okay. So, make sure we find out the information and invite them to a meeting or the fifteenth, whichever works for them. Reports.
Um, again, appreciate the crisis canine, um, things have been going good, Dalton is enjoying Pocahontas. Keeps talking about potentially, uh, I don't know. Possibly even wants to buy a lot out in the, out in the new area, so, you know, I guess we'll see how that all goes, uh, but he's definitely invested in it, we continue on with. Lorenz, obviously, my PT test didn't happen on Saturday for some reason, a lot, you know. Again, and most guys don't wanna run in, in the gym at thirty laps, cause it's painful, but for the most part, we're still moving along, I know we'll have one higher, starting after January first up in Lorenz, so. That'll cover that, we haven't had any, any significant issues or complaints. But, uh, just keep driving on.
Alright, so I need to make sure I tell you, the annual financial report has been turned into the state, so has the urban renewal. Everything's been turned in before today, but the deadline was today, so it'll be posted on the Department of Management website, everything's been approved. They're not helping with that, so we're good, we made all the deadlines and the lawyers, everybody's fine. Mayor.
So, so, so where are we at on this, I don't understand.
We gotta even some, show that to the, um, parks board, but we gotta talk to the parks board and. Have a discussion with them on how we need to proceed with this, cause if they're supposed to be making the final decision in our ordinances, we can't just bypass them, so there's gotta be some kind of discussion with them. And check into the sentences on how it is, on how we're supposed to go, like the proper channels.
But the design is, is not set up.
I personally don't like it.
What?
I, I personally think, uh, we should at least at the minimum put back what was there.
Well, what was? How would you compare that? Well, put a north wall.
I don't know.
I'm not saying it can't be done, but it just doesn't, said he wants a little more than that.
Okay, well, I, I didn't understand that stuff he was unhappy with. Okay. I have nothing, no.
Council.
I have nothing. I'll just do a adjournment. I'll second.
All favor.
Alright.
Alright. Thank you, thank you. Fifteen, next one.
We're taking that.
Last one. Do I have Bill, I have Cody.
Well, if you don't say.